Okay, I'll have to figure that out. That's one more thing to do this.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. All board members are present. Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Someone want to make a motion to approve the?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Agenda.
Oh, the agenda, I'm sorry, I saw minutes there. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.
Set the consent agenda.
I'll second that.
Any comments, Todd?
Um, nobody passes, don't really pass.
That was a good answer.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Board committee reports. I don't believe we had any meetings this past month. So we'll move on to the superintendent reports.
Yeah, just a quick thing, we'll have new teachers coming in this week. We'll start on Wednesday with them. And then, obviously, our teacher workshop days begin next Monday. And then, we'll be talking more about some of the things that are going on with construction. I've got Todd Wetzel here from ICS. He's going to give you an update, a very thorough update on where we're at. And yes, we will be ready for school, believe it or not. And we'll talk about MCA's here in a second, too.
And then, we'll have our open house that got moved back, right?
Yeah, the open house, we had to make a decision a couple, uh, two weeks ago. It just, we could have had it, but there's just too many things that wouldn't have been done. We want to make sure, you know, 95% of the work is done looking good before we have people touring around. So, everything will be ready for, you know, the start of school, for students and staff. But there's, Todd's going to go over this. There'll be some work, obviously, be doing, being done at night when the kids aren't here to get things finished and all that.
Got moved back to October?
Eighth.
Yeah.
Yep. So, still on a Sunday.
Kit and I do have something to comment about as far as Southwest Metro, intermediate district. We had negotiations with the teachers and we have reached a tentative agreement that we'll be discussing at our first board meeting tomorrow night. So, that'll be our first meeting for the school year. And then, also, we'll be discussing the tentative agreement.
That must have went quick, then, right?
Well, actually, we had about five sessions.
You did, okay.
I don't know if that's considered quick or not, but.
That's good.
All right, next, we're going to get a construction update from Todd.
Well, I'm not real sure where the last 15 months went, but, um, we're going to be ready for staff to enter the middle. All to start, go through each project. The middle school project, we will be ready for staff next Monday. There is going to be a lot of work remaining once teachers are in there, once school starts. When I say a lot of work, I'm basically talking about the terrazzo flooring, which is in the locker banks, in front of the kitchen. All that will be poured out by the 25th and be ready for students to come back on the 28th. What's going to be remaining, that I feel will be remaining, is the grinding of the terrazzo. So, once they put that down, they have to do a grind and polish to get it smooth, to make it look like the finished product. So, we will have the contractor schedule that for off-hours to ensure the safety of the kids, the noise, the dust, and the staff, so. We did have a little minor setback in the kitchen late last week with the plumbing inspector. We got that resolved. Contractors are rushing to get that finished up so we can keep the inspections on for Thursday and Friday of this week. So, all product can be moved into the freezer and cooler. Fingers are crossed. Just a little update on where they're at. They're going to be starting landscaping, hopefully, later this week, starting around the south, working around to the front on the west side. We were hoping that would be started today, but the rain held them off a little bit. All the paving and parking lots are completed at the middle school. And like I said, they're continuing to work on terrazzo. They have been working seven, 12-hour, 12-hour days. So, they have a lot of work to get done. And like I said, I don't anticipate it being 100%, but it will be occupiable. And that same goes for tile work, same shortage of crews. They're probably going to have some miscellaneous walls in the cafeteria to get done, and some columns, so. Again, you know, good news, final storefront at the bus garage, or the bus entrance is being put in today. So, we're going to be moving furniture in, starting the 22nd in the psychologist's office, which is the last area to get furniture. I guess, any questions on middle school, before I move on?
When you talk about landscaping, it's just grass seeded, or you sod it?
It's mostly sod.
Mostly sod?
Yeah.
Anything, like trees or anything?
Uh, there's trees, there's plantings around the main entrance, wood mulch.
Okay.
So, it's kind of variety. There's lots of shrubs. It will look really nice if it ever gets done.
Sure will, it will.
Anything else on middle school? All right, moving on to the central education campus. This one's been a very interesting project. We do have the area D, which is over here on the east side, that is basically done except for cleaning. Furniture is moved into most of the classrooms. We do have some new furniture coming the 22nd for a conference room and a couple classrooms there. Like I said, final cleaning still needs to be approved and get completed. But that area is basically pretty, pretty well wiped out. We will, we will be getting the temporary occupancy, I'm told, so the staff can be in here. And that's pretty typical for any school. You will only get a temporary certificate of occupancy. Do test and balance, commissioning, final items have to be completed. And that can sometimes take a couple, three months into the school year to get that completed. You know, the big, the big thing here is we had a tight schedule to work with over the summer and getting into areas. And again, it was labor shortages with the tile work, ceiling crews and everything like that. And this is statewide, it's not just in New Prague. There's a lot of schools that might not be able to open on time. So, I anticipate the west wing over in Phase Three going down to the final wire. The good news is that the students in that area are not back till September 5th, so we got a little extra time. We're going to have rooms ready for the teachers that are moving back down to this area from the high school, and they'll be ready next week. Most of the classrooms on the south of this hallway over here have all the furniture moved in and are ready for, to be set up. So, again, we're going to have, I believe, it's my gut feeling that we will have tile work to do in the hallways once school is in session. And again, that will be done after hours. However, we did give the contractors the okay to do the finishes in the lower level A and the staircases after school starts. This shouldn't affect the student's safety or the everyday operations. If you guys, I don't know which direction came in, but they are ready to pour curb over here on the south lot. Once the curb is poured, they'll tolerance the parking lot. And it slipped a little bit. They're planning on paving that lot on the next, the 22nd. So, the first two days that staff is back in the school, it will not be ready to use. I still think we'll be okay for parking the first couple days.
Is, when will this entrance be used again, after that's paved?
Soon as that's paved, you can use the lot the next day. So, I believe they're going to put both lifts on the lot and stripe it, so it'll probably be a couple, two-day process. And that following day, you should be able to use it, and the main entrance can be opened up. Those, obviously, I'm not sure if the landsc, the landscapers are scheduled to be on-site later this week on this site. So, there might be some landscaping going on, which you can work around. So, the playground equipment scheduled to be installed the 21st, which is right out on the south end of the building. So, that's basically where we're at. There's a lot of cleanup to get done over here the next week. Been pushing the contractors, they're working long hours. And I think we're going to, we're going to make it somehow, so. Any questions on CEC?
This is a tennis court, how many more layers are there?
I didn't get to that project yet. That's a whole separate project. We got four of them to deal with. I'll get to that one, that last on my list. Anything else on CEC? All right, Falcon Ridge and ALC, this is our good project. We have final inspection scheduled for Thursday and Friday for electrical and for final occupancy. As of the end of the day today, all classrooms are cleaned, ready for the teachers to start their next Monday. The corridors are going to start getting that cleaned up and ready for staff to occupy the building. There is a couple minor areas after schools, hopefully before school yet. Their casework supplier did not meet their install dates. And very minor casework at both Falcon Ridge and ALC. It's not going to affect anybody that much. So, they're hoping to get that in before school starts. Also, there'll be some people still working in the boiler room at Falcon Ridge. But other than that, everything should be 100% unless our rubber floor in the gym doesn't show up this week. There, it might be in the gym next week while staff is in there. But that will be done when school starts, so. Like I said, up there, they're doing final cleaning, you know, working in the boiler room, getting that wrapped up. The gym acoustical panels started installation today. And the exterior restoration will be completed this week as well. So, that was a easier project to work with up there. Like I said, a few things will be left when school starts, but majority will be done. There shouldn't be any questions on that one.
Well, geez.
All right, the bus garage and tennis courts. Due to the late start, due to the state plan review taking a little, actually about 30 days longer than anticipated, we are slightly behind schedule. Craig and I have coordinated with Brad and Rick and worked out a schedule for the middle school tennis program. We were hoping to be on that August 15th. That's not going to happen. So, they're going to be ready on September 11th. And the way we worked it out, the first week of practice, they'll be practicing with the nets and no markings, which they were fine with. Second week, I believe, they're going to the high school to practice. Or the first week, they're going to high school, then the next week without the lines. And then, our 30-day, our 28-day cure for the batuminus that was put down is September 7th. So, they're going to cancel practice on September 8th. And they'll do the surfacing, striping, and completion by Monday before practice. So, all the lifts are on the batuminus. There's two lifts that went on there last week. I believe it was last Tuesday they started, and they finished Wednesday. It's currently, they're putting fencing up.
Yeah. I thought it was so close to the CEC building, so there'd be.
You just blended that right into this project? Thankfully, that's separate.
Thank you.
It goes with the bus, that makes more sense, huh?
Yeah, so they, they're working on fencing today. They got the posts in for the nets. I'm assuming as soon as it dries out, they'll complete the final grading around there, they'll get that sodded. And I would say within a week or so, that should be finished up, except for our weight on the surfacing. The retaining wall is completed. Down at the bus garage, the delays on that, you know, we were originally planning on that being done middle of October. They're tracking it end of October, so not super bad. And they can probably still make that time up. Kind of some critical dates, we want to make sure they get the paving installed and the lot prepped. And their current schedule showing that going on in a couple weeks, so. They've been hit with rain a lot harder on that project, meaning it's outside. The building pad area is saturated. The north building addition that we're doing has been flooded, so it's just putting them behind schedule. But they are started roofing the new addition. The siding on the south and the west is complete, the new red siding that was put on. So, they are making progress. And like I said, it's not super critical on a date on the bus garage, but they're still tracking end of October. So, and I don't see why they can't meet that.
And they're just going to leave the buses outside until it's all done?
I believe Craig just planned on.
Family at the high school.
Yep. So, it is possible that they can occupy the existing building sooner, but we don't really want to get in their way to slow them down on the rest of it, so. So, sorry if I got a little winded. Craig's probably a lot quicker than I am, so.
No, we actually know what's going on now.
Good, because I don't really know.
No, appreciate that, Todd.
Yeah.
Any other questions? All right, well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for all your work on this.
I had a full head of hair.
We've had, with ICS, it's worked out good with World Architect and ICS. Todd being our owner's rep, making sure things get done. And I, I can't say enough good things about that, so.
Yeah, there've been no issues with having things all off the plate?
No.
That we know of yet anyways.
Yeah, not, not that we know of, but no, I wouldn't do anything different, so.
Next, we're doing the MCA results?
Yep, I've got Maran Ballard here, our Director of Curriculum and Assessment. And she's going to share the results with you, and let's go through.
All right, so I provided you with a handout of just, there's a lot of data that Tim and I have been looking over lately. But the sheet that I provided for you gives you the comparables of our middle school. They really shined again this year. And when looking at our comparable districts, you'll see that they were number one in math and second in reading and science. And so, that was really good, strong data to see. And then, the other side of the handout that I provided you is how we ranked with our neighboring districts. And we did, you'll see, second in math, third in reading, and second in science. And overall, I have kind of the breakdown for you comparing, we like to look at our data compared with the state data. And so, across our math, reading, and science, we're very, very similar to last year. And we've maintained our distance from the state average also. And we, we want to keep a big distance with the state average in a positive direction. And you'll see that in math, reading, and science, we have strong, strong distances between the state and New Prague, specifically in math. And so, we were happy to see that we stayed strong and are looking for more ways to grow, for sure, and in the future. And just some other highlights in addition to your handout. Our high school reading scores overall, they went up 5% from last year, which is a significant jump. You're not comparing the same group of kids, but we're looking at our ninth and 10th grade English program as a whole. So, we were pleased to see that growth. Our seventh grade math was 31% above the state average. So, that's a huge, awesome thing to celebrate. And a lot of hard work goes into our whole middle school team as a whole. But we wanted to highlight that, for sure, that seventh grade piece. Our middle school, as I mentioned, they ranked number one in math among our comparable districts. And our eighth grade reading cohort, they grew 6% from last year. So, the same group of kids when they were in seventh grade, their, their reading scores this year in eighth grade, they grew 6%. And that was a significant increase also, because that, that grade was already high. And so, they were able to grow, grow those kids even more. In our elementaries, Eagleview, looking at our comparable schools, there's 23 elementaries that we looked at. They ranked seventh in both math and reading, and that was our highest. So, we were pleased to see that they were strong against some of our comparable schools. Falcon Ridge, their fifth grade cohort grew 12%. And that was really good to see. That was in math, is where they grew. And then, our Raven Stream, their big celebration was that they had the highest science proficiency with 76% in their, in their area. So, those are some of the highlights from the, the data that we've been looking over. And of course, there's always more that we can look at and do. But we really look at our grade level to grade level and how they grow from year to year in addition to our overall scores.
Yeah, I just want to add, too, is when we talk state average, what Maran was going over, that's, the one thing that's constant is the state average. Because the test does, is going to be variable, will change from year to year. But that's one thing we can always compare. The other thing is when we talk about comparable districts, we've got the 10 comparable districts. We like to, even though she showed you the neighboring districts, we like to compare where we're at with school districts of like demographics. And I will say this, just on the middle school, too, on middle school math and science, both math and science, and reading's high, too. But middle school math and science is not just number one or near the top of comparable, but they're, I think, seventh and eighth grade math could be the, almost the highest in the state. I know Brad Gregor was looking that up and going through the State Department website. And I think he found one school that was one-tenth a point higher in seventh grade math right now, so. And I will, I'll go back to 2007 when the MCA started. New Prague Middle School, math, reading, we were at state average, you're just barely above it. So, it's gone a long way. So, you want as big a separation as you can from the state. We want all kids, you know, growth is very important. You know, there's four levels. There's, does not meet, partially met, proficiency, and then exceeds. And we want to push our kids, and we're not going into too much detail, but we want to push as many as we can, obviously, into the exceeds level. And so, you see that growth through the years or within a year. And just like we want kids that do not meet, get them to partial or proficiency, or partial to proficiency. We've had kids go from did not meet in fourth or fifth grade to exceeds in reading by the time they left eighth grade. So, it's some really good things. And, I mean, this is one measurement, but, you know, it's, it's an important one. And it's, it gives you a good snapshot where we're at as a district.
Seems to me about eight years ago, in the comparable districts, we were ranked seventh, eighth, and ninth in a lot of areas, and this has really changed.
Yep. And then, and actually, I go back two years ago, we were one in, one across the board on the neighboring. And we're always, the last few years, always one, two, or three. And same with the comparable districts, too. So, it's a good thing.
Yeah, very good.
All right, thank you, Maran.
Thank you. Resolution relating to the referendum.
Do you have any comments?
Yeah, just on this, and my recommendation for you is simply go one question, and that we do a renewal with a $100 increase, similar to what was done in 2011. Yeah, we do have a healthy, we feel we have a healthy fund balance, and we'll know more when the audit gets done. But we do have projections where we are going to be declining. And I think it's important to at least go to $100 to make up for somewhat inflation. I know since 2009, state funding has averaged just at 1%. And of course, inflation can be at 3%. So, I think going six years with one question. And I think what's, what's going to help us right now is, you know, we're, we're still a growing district. And I think it's important to limit the tax impact as much as possible. So, renewal with, again, 100, I think, comes to $42 a year on a $200,000 house approximately. So, it's $3.50 a month, and I think it's reasonable. And we'll hopefully, you never know with state or federal funding what's going to happen. But for the time being, at least for the next couple of years, I think we're safe if we go this route.
I agree with Tim. I think it's a very reasonable request to ask our taxpayers, and I think we should go forward with the resolution.
Does anyone not agree?
By no means out of line as far as what we're asking here. When you consider the differences in amounts that other districts are asking of their voters, I think ours is very reasonable.
And as was presented in the meetings, the, were lower than appropriate people's way.
And let me say that, yeah, right now, we're, we're getting, it's about 10% of our budget, but we're getting through our local levy about $871 per student. And like I said, Lakeville was, you had on their tech referendum, per pupil, they're getting about $1,500. I think Prior Lake, you saw the figures, right around 1,300 per student. Northfield is 1,900. And I think on their website, you can look, they're asking for another 450 onto that. So, I, I think we, we do a good job, we're good stewards of the money that we do receive locally, and obviously, from the state, too. But we just, we need to limit the tax impact, but we still, still, we still have concerns about adequate funding. But I'm comfortable going like we did last time in 2011 with a renewal with a $100 increase, so, to limit that. But still, at least for the next couple of years, to ensure that we're okay.
Any other comments?
If not, then I'll consider a, consider a motion to consider the resolution relating to approving the new referendum revenue authorization of the school district and calling an election thereof.
I'll make the motion.
Is there a second?
Don, second.
Don.
Don, second, okay. Be resolved by the School Board of Independent School District Number 721, State of Minnesota, as follows. The Board hereby determines and declares that it is necessary and expedient for the school district to increase its general education revenue by $246.70 per adjusted pupil unit. As provided by law, the ballot question must be re-veated in the term "per adjusted pupil unit" as "per pupil." A portion of this proposed referendum revenue authorization, $146.70 per adjusted pupil unit, would replace the school district's existing authorization, which is scheduled to expire after tax is payable in 2017. The additional revenue will be used to finance school operations, and the property tax portion thereof will require an estimated referendum tax rate of approximately .0569% of the referendum market value of the school district for taxes payable in 2018, the first year it is to be levied. The proposed referendum revenue authorization would be applied for six years unless otherwise revoked or reduced by, by, provided by law. The question on the approval of this referendum revenue authorization shall be, School District Question Number One, on the School District ballot at the special election held to approve said authorization. The ballot question of the school district shall be submitted to the qualified voters of the school district at a special election, which is hereby called and directed to be held on Tuesday, November 7th, 2017, between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. How do you vote on this refer, on this resolution? Yes. Jerry?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis? Yes, item passes.
Custodian staff, is that what you're doing?
I believe Tim sent a little bit of information out about this, but Craig has really evaluated his custodial staff in the CEC building. And we have about 120,000 square feet to clean in this building. And if he uses his, you know, rather generous, generous formula for applying custodial help, we are short one custodian in the CEC. And we, especially because there's so many bathrooms in this building now, and they're really nice. It's really nice to have that many bathrooms, but we have some very large bathrooms that have to be cleaned every single night. We also have the aquatic center that has to be cleaned every single night. And with that, he's recommending that we increase a 1.0 FTE custodian, half of which will be charged to the new aquatic center. And half would be absorbed by the general fund. So, it's about $25,000 to the general fund and about $25,000 to the pool. The $25,000 for the pool, about half of that is our responsibility, and the city of New Prague is, is responsible for the other half. And it is in the aquatic center budget. And then, he would have a couple of custodians that are assigned a 6:30 p.m. to 3:00 a.m. shift, because the aquatic center closes at 9:00. Nobody can start in there until 9:00. Kids Company gets out at 6:00, and so, they can't start cleaning there until 6:00. So, kind of delay a couple of people starting so they can finish up the cleaning in Kids Company and the aquatic center. So, just asking for approval, that was not in the 1718 budget that was just approved. So, we're asking for approval of that. just approved, so we're asking for approval of that tonight, so you can get it posted and, and filled.
So what will be the exact dollar amount that this will be?
About twenty, about fifty thousand dollars total, of which twenty-five thousand will be the general fund and twenty-five thousand would be to the aquatic center.
Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the additional staff addition for the custodial staff.
Second. Any further discussion? I think it's pretty clear that when you have more space, you need more people to clean it, so.
Yeah, and, and we did get rid of the nineteen twenty-three portion, however, when you consider the bathrooms in the aquatic center, it's really not a, an even trade.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Next, we have the long-term maintenance plan.
Yes, we are required to approve a long-term maintenance facility plan for that revenue, both revenue and expenditure plan and the, I'll go over mainly the expenditure plan. And basically it's about what you have been seeing, however, there's two major changes. One is that the roof was scheduled to be done, the high school roof was scheduled to be done a few years from now. Craig has seen some issues with the roof at the high school. Our engineer is really recommending we do it next summer. So that has been moved up a couple of years. To, to finance that, we're going to have to sell general obligation facility bonds. I've been in contact with Springstead and they, we will be, you know, going out for bid, if it's approved tonight, we'll be going out for bid in January, we'll have the exact dollar amount and then we'll be selling general obligation bonds, so we can have those bond proceeds available in June to pay for the roof. That roof is going to be probably two point seven five to three million dollars. It's a very large project and we would have to get started on it right when school gets done in order to complete that over the summer. The second item that's new is in two thousand and twenty and this is a little bit iffy on the timeline too, but at Falcon Ridge, we have cabinetry and casework that really needs to be completed. It was priority two when we did the facilities study and Craig is saying we really need to get that done at Falcon Ridge and that's a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar project. So you'll see that is in, right now it's in two thousand and twenty. Obviously that's a couple of years away and so we'll see what happens when we get there, but, so what'll happen with the roof project at the high school is that we will sell the bonds and then we will use our long-term facility maintenance revenue to pay off the bonds over probably a ten-year period. So in the expenditure plan, I put it in, I put the expenses in the year we'd have it, we're going to do some in fiscal year eighteen, that would be June, and then we'll do the majority of it in July and August next summer. And then on the revenue side of things, I put in the potential bond payments of about, let me look here real quick. With the over levy, just under seven hundred thousand dollars, oh wait, that's not the right one, sorry about that. About three hundred thousand dollars a year. And again, the exact amount will depend on where the bids come in and what the interest rate is and so forth, so we'll use the bond proceeds to pay for that and then we'll pay off the principal and interest of the bonds with our revenue.
Which will mean that there's, that money is dedicated to the roof or the long-term money is dedicated to the roof for ten years and everything else that has to be done long term with that levy will be, I don't know.
Will be paid as you go.
Yeah.
Was, was there some maintenance in two thousand and eighteen that could be moved back to two thousand and twenty or is, I guess?
Yeah, there really isn't any, there aren't any really big projects, I mean, the high school roof was really the biggest one we had.
Okay.
And we were hoping to, I was, what I, my original plan was that we would build up our long-term facilities maintenance to have enough money to pay for it, but with the architect recommending that we move that project up, that's just not going to be possible. So we have to do it next summer.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve the long-term facilities maintenance update plan.
Second.
Second motion.
Any further discussion?
No, something we need to do.
And a ten-year plan is a good idea to get things in perspective and have a plan out there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Ties membership.
Yes, last May or June, you passed a resolution similar to this, that we would give notice that we are going to leave ties membership. This year, we could not leave their membership because it would require a large payment on our behalf. It was three hundred and some thousand dollars of their long-term debt to leave membership and we only spend about, oh, four or five thousand dollars with them a year, so didn't think that payoff was there. So they have, they are revising their bylaws to, to lower what our payment would be to leave to about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars. It's still not, obviously in a, we're still in a position that we could leave membership with that kind of payment. However, we'd still like to pass a resolution saying we intend to give, you know, we intend to leave just in case they were to change their bylaws and we would be allowed to leave membership. So just asking you to approve that resolution again.
At this time, I'll enter a motion to consider the membership withdrawal from ties.
So moved.
For a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas New Prague Area Schools is currently a member of ties, whereas New Prague Area Schools would like to give notice of possible intent to leave for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Prague Area School Board of Education, that New Prague Area Schools is giving notice to ties, that New Prague Area Schools may wish to withdraw its membership effective for the two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen school year. How do you vote on this, Jerry?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Next, we have a resolution to accept a donation from the Swimming Booster Club.
Do I have a motion to consider the resolution to accept a donation for the Swimming Booster Club?
Don't move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to consider the following resolution. Whereas the New Prague Area School Board of Education has established a policy concerning the acceptance of gifts to the school district and whereas the policy states that the school board may receive for the benefit of the school district bequest donations, grants of gifts for any proper purpose and the school board shall have the sole authority to determine whether any gift with a value of one thousand dollars or more, or any precondition, condition or limitation unused included in a proposed gift with a value of one thousand dollars or more will further the interests or benefits of the school district and whether it should be accepted or rejected. Whereas the school board may accept the gift valued at one thousand dollars or more only by resolution of two-thirds of its members. Whereas the Swimming Booster Club wishes to donate a pace clock for the aquatic center valued at one thousand two hundred and ten dollars under no conditions.
How do you vote on this, Don?
Yes.
Sherry?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kitten?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Dennis, yes, item passes.
Next, we have an application for the dissolution of cooperative sponsorship for adaptive softball. Sounds like one school's dropping out.
Yep, it's just simply, right now, we're with Tri-City United, Bell Plain, Jordan, La Sura Henderson and La Sura Henderson simply has no longer, doesn't have any students interested in adaptive softball, so we have to do a dissolution of this cooperative sponsorship.
No, I'll make a motion for the, accept the dissolution of the cooperative sponsorship for adaptive softball.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Now we have the application for cooperative sponsorship for adaptive softball with the remaining schools.
That's exactly right, the, the four schools now and, and it'll still be the same. Team identification still will be New Prague Trojans, team colors are Cardinal black and will obviously stay as a whole school.
I'll make a motion to enter into an application for cooperative sponsorship for the adaptive softball with the change of, of membership.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. We're going to discuss superintendent goals for twenty seventeen eighteen.
Yeah, we'll put those on the screen here in a second. There's some goals as I go over have, have stayed the same from year to year, I think that are very important and made a few changes on the goals. First one, again, is academic goal, is that we have evidence of growth at each level and I'll just go back to this past years, for example, we don't have the A C T results yet, should be any day, but.
Why we haven't done another evaluation? Cause we're waiting for the results of the previous years?
That's what we're waiting for, so we'll find out if we've met the goal. Right now though, I will say for as far as growth, meeting with Sandy today, sharing the MCA stuff, about fifteen areas at all the grade levels show, show growth at ten of the fifteen, which is pretty good. All right, and then just some strategies and, and keep in mind when I go to these strategies, this is not the only strategy, this is still in a way a, a working document, maybe a rough draft, but you know, strategies obviously to continually to communicate our vision, mission, values and goals, so it's more of an emphasis, so people know it's important. And then obviously to make decisions that are in alignment with these, our district's vision, mission, values and goals. A big thing, obviously for a strategy is staff development and that we focus on the three big ideas of being collaborative, focus on student learning and focus on results and, and also holding each principal accountable, accountable to submit goals and action plans based on results too. So those are some of the strategies I think have been, we just try to get better and better in each of those areas. The second goal, develop sound financial and communication strategy to pass the local operating levy. And I didn't mention, if, if our levy would not pass on November seventh, obviously there would be some major reductions, cause we'd be losing about six hundred and fifty thousand dollars in annual aid, so it'll be very, very important to get this passed and to show the need for that. Some of the strategies, again, doesn't include everything, but work with our team of Sandy, Sean and Tony to get the information ready and prepared for operating, for passage of that operating levy. Give information to vote yes committee, similar to what we did in two thousand and fifteen in our bond referendum. Speak to every staff and employee group during the month of October, speak at the PAC meetings, presented a variety of community group meetings, just like we did before, example Rotary, and then have some open meetings this fall too, so.
You'll have information on the school website?
Yeah, oh yeah, we'll have information, it's almost, we've met briefly Sean and, and Tony and I, and it's pretty much the same template, that we'll have a video, we'll have that information, frequently asked questions, tax impact, all that stuff. So pretty much the same model, it's just, you know, again, getting out and demonstrating, you know, why it is and educating people so they can make an informed decision. Goal three, this one's a new one also, just like number two. We're going to do student, I know, I know we do parent surveys, we, we have some student surveys, but we're going to have one tailored more simply to the social, emotional component, similar to the one, and I've got Amy and Tony working on this one, Amy Johnson, our special services director, similar to the Minnesota survey that's done every three years. We're going to do one, a social emotional one at the different grade levels and, and just, this first year more than anything, we'll establish a baseline, but I think we'll have a good idea where we're at with it. And then some of the strategies and this are just a few of them, this again, a work in progress, just like Tom Wetschka was working with groups of students and presenting at staff meetings, he'll provide our leadership and education for students and staff and equity. Gospel Corda, remember he will be our, our keynote speaker on Thursday, August twenty-fourth, and he's our new boy soccer coach, his first day of practice was today, so we're going to use him a lot, large group and small groups for students and staff this year. And then just ongoing professional development and one of our new things we're going to really emphasize this year too, and I know Aaron Jasperson assisting with Brad Skogarbo, one of his things will be student leadership training for kids, for our leaders in our school and the arts, academics and athletics, so that would be a big thing. Anyway, next one is goal four and this is again, one that probably always have is to continue to collaborate, develop positive working relationships with our various communities, being involved in chamber of commerce and social functions, communicating regularly with each of the city's administrative staff and just continue to be visible and, and develop a trust and good relationship with the people from all those areas, so. And finally, goal five, improve on areas that were below ninety percent, we're getting fewer and fewer, below ninety percent, I think we're down to three now, but just lead by example, follow the New Prague way and just embrace accountability for all educators within every facet of our school district. So those are all of them, I just want, last thing, I want to show you the academic goals. I, I should say, these are our overarching goals, it's not just academic, but we shared with our leadership teams from all the buildings and our overarching goals is by third grade for kids on our, when we do that assessment, Fanta's panel to be at grade, at or beyond grade level and meet or exceed the grade level benchmarks on classroom assessments. FAST is our formative, national assessment that we do in grades three through eight and then we have the A C Ts or MCA's. And then finally, like I said, we put that new one in there on the surveys, taking a closer look at that, that we're going to do a new survey on the social emotional part that all students feel safe and valued within their school's learning environment. So those are the overarching goals, but I just wanted to share them with you and then obviously the general public community, those are our goals and I think it's important that they're measured and that makes it important and you can see how we're doing.
And I think if anyone has any suggestions for Tim of things you want to see, let him know.
Yep. And I, and I, what I'll probably, you'll get, you're going to get Amy and Tony here because it's a new survey, it's probably later this fall what it's going to look like. We'll probably do the survey probably in February or March before the academic part and you know, it's not going to be a hundred questions like the Minnesota survey. We, time is of, principals get real nervous on time, but a good snapshot of where we're at and some of the pieces, when we talk about social emotional, you might say, well, what's that about? It could be about harassment, bullying, it's about mental health, you know, all those things that obviously it goes back to feeling safe and valued. We got to see what, how we're doing, you know, at the different grade levels, gender, everything.
And the social emotional is a very important part of it, that's for sure.
Yep.
They can be anonymous when they do that, right?
Oh yes, yep, I said, those surveys will be anonymous, yes. Just like, it'll be just like the Minnesota survey, but it's just going to be a, more of a, it's just a little bit, going to be condensed, put it that way. Okay?
Any other questions?
Nope.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero.